All right, we're going to start. Councilmember Peterson is going to arrive. He might be just a little bit late, which is fine. So it is February 20th, 5:15 plus time. Call the meeting in order. Jane, you want to do your roll call?
Lindberg?
Here.
Rudolph?
Here.
Shaven?
Here.
Kroger?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
And Councilmember Peterson will be arriving late.
Okay, we've all gotten the agenda. I don't receive any additions, subtractions. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Rudolph, second by Shaven.
Roll call Lindberg?
Aye.
Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Thank you.
And state any conflicts now or along the way through the agenda. Under the consent agenda, these are all under one motion. These are the minutes of February 6th, 2024, council meeting. The claims list 1308 and the amount of $153,676.83. Everybody saw some of the larger amounts on there. I didn't receive any questions or concern about anything, no. Expenditure and revenue reports for the month of January of 2024. HMU sewer landfill reconciliation report for January of '24. Sheriff's statistical report for January of '24. Renewal application for the Knights of Columbus Harlem, Iowa Inc., special C, Class C retail alcohol license. It's an eighth-month term starting February 12 through October 12 of 2024. And then another renewal application for the Knights of Columbus Harlem Inc., Class C retail alcohol license for a five-day term, which is March 5th through the 9th. And also renewal application for Veterans Memorial Auditorium Commission, Class C retail alcohol license. Any discussion, questions, anything about those items? Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Lindberg, second by Kroger.
Roll call Lindberg?
Aye.
Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Thank you.
Under other business, we have Resolution 2553, Resolution of appreciation for years of service. Linda Berger, 25 years. I think that's was clarifying start date, month, year. We had to get it clarified, right, correct, as far as?
That's correct.
Yeah, so the, just real quick, send a note out to you all. The December, which is the agenda when we do these. So Jeff Meesig was recognized in December simply due to some oversight and misunderstanding, clarification on start date for permanent part-time or full-time. Lindbergh, who's actually worked with the city for near, actually 35 years, but on permanent, part-time, or full-time would have been 25 years. And we had recently had our employee appreciation, and that's when that was identified. So I want to go back and correct that and provide that recognition at this time. And she was recognized at 10, 15, and 20. So this would be in terms of the permanent status, a 25-year. And I know Amanda, the library director, had spoken or met with her, and I also had an opportunity to speak with her as well. But this will be the formal resolution, recognize that and authorizing the recognition payment.
That's a sizable amount of time, 25 years. Appreciate her.
And apologize for the.
Appreciate, yeah.
Can I say something?
Sure.
That's my wife.
Yep, that's what I thought.
The other 10 years is gone.
What's that?
So the other 10 years she worked for the city is gone, or what? She worked like 36 years. They're not recognizing her for working way back then. You know, she was working three, four hours a day every weekend at the Vets Building, but she got a piece of her money and everything there. But supposedly they can't find any records that she worked back then, or what's the deal there? And then another thing, while I'm talking here, Elaine Sprague, you didn't recognize her 45 years plus either. She did not get nothing, no recognition or nothing. There's two people libraries, there's over 80 hours of them from the city, and neither one got recognized.
I'll speak for administration side, and certainly we'll look into that.
I talked to her, 45 years plus, no recognition, no nothing for her and my wife both from the city. I mean, if you have bad records, whatever, you've got records of my work for the city 30 years ago?
Yeah, I could have said that.
Well, see, this is true bad records. I mean, that's not bad. You can't even recognize somebody working, whether it's part-time or not, but still, they're working for the city.
So this isn't a debate, so.
No, I'm just telling you what my thoughts are because.
So what we can, what I can speak to for that?
My wife, 36 years.
Have you to speak to your wife further about that with the library director? She was recognized at 10, 15, and 20.
Yeah.
So this would be the next five increments. So if the, certainly if there was a misunderstanding, some of this proceeds current administration, et cetera. Yet if she was recognized at 10, 15, and 20, why wasn't anything spoken up at that point about this additional 35, 36?
Probably was, but same old crap there with the city. Stuff going on, you can't find records that she worked.
Yeah, yeah.
And then even, like I said, you got another gal who worked 45 years plus and you had no recognition here last month, or nothing for her, she can get nothing. I talked to her, she was kind of down and out, that she's not recognized at all.
Well, the library director, and I'm sure any of the elected officials must be happy to talk to her. It's unfortunate that she's coming to you.
Yeah.
That individual wasn't even.
It's just a recognition thing for both women there. It's not a money thing or anything there.
100%, I couldn't agree more.
Both women, you guys, how long you been in the city? How long you been here?
About seven years full-time.
Well, just take the seven years, I'll starve over. How would you feel? That's, well, that's what I'm saying. The feeling there is what it is. They're having, you know, working for the city for all this time there, and then all of a sudden, they weren't working for her. So kind of low, I think. You need to do something for the both women there to recognize them.
Well, I think we probably can talk to Amanda, and we can probably talk to each individual person and get their thoughts on it and probably clear it up with them.
All the directors have not even been around that long, so it's just a matter of there and here.
No, appreciate your input. Thanks for attending.
Yeah, I did.
Do we need a motion for the resolution?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm going to take a motion.
Second.
Motion by Lindberg, second by Kroger.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Peterson?
All abstained, since I wasn't here.
Then we need to receive and file the Public Property Committee minutes from the February 12th, 2024 meeting. Everybody have a chance to look at those? Or motion to receive and file those?
Motion. Second.
Motion by Kroger, second by Peterson. Good to see you, Mr. Peterson.
Do your rolls.
Roll call Lindberg?
Aye.
Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Thank you.
And then out of those, of that meeting and those minutes, we have a Resolution 2554 to amend GH Christiansen subdivision Declaration of Covenants allowing modular homes, which I think everybody who was at that meeting, we discussed that, where it was in, and then it was taken out. It just needs to be added back in.
This was brought to our attention, and it actually was amended back in 2011. So to correct that, I think the best way, or lawyer put it, was to correct the scripters there. It does need clarification and review in front of the governing board to reflect that appropriately. So again, the original covenant, '09, did include it, and then in 2011, which again proceeds, everyone sitting around the table, it was adopted and put in writing, so between different administration and the city attorney, that wasn't carried forward. So this clarifies that.
Okay. Is there a motion for Resolution 2554?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Rudolph, second by Lindberg.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Also out of that, we have a Resolution 2555, setting a public hearing date for Tuesday, March 5th, 2024, at 5:15 PM. City Hall Council Chambers for the sale of city-owned lots 40 through 44, 21 through 23, and 25, the GH Christiansen subdivision to S&R Baker Real Estate.
And if any committee members want to speak to that, and those that were there to hear of that opportunity are actually the interest in that. But I certainly can get an overview of the public hearing. This is simply setting the public hearing. This, again, that continues to be city-owned property. The, it's exciting interest and development, so it was discussed. So there is a proposed contract. The buyer is still reviewing, and we've spoken about it. Two of the lots were where our community garden is, so that was brought up as well. So, for example, one of the items in that contract, not have any construction begin there prior to October of this year, which would get through the growing season. And I sent you, or you received a sample of that contract yesterday, but that would need to be finalized before the public hearing, of course. And for those, this investment, this will be reviewed again at the public hearing. Again, the, what the, you know, this company's doing is single-family market rate. And again, it will be on the perimeter of where some of the other single-family homes are. And it would be exciting to see the completion of that residential building. And I guess those, the three to my right here were at the meeting, at least on the committee, but anything you want to add to that?
I don't, I mean, basically, the people are just looking to purchase all nine, correct? For the what, the basic fair hearing, so?
And that's the remainder of the available lots, correct? That's it? That'll be done if those are sold?
Nine down there, two are tied up, like he said, to the community gardens. With notice of that, I think their intention is for to get one or to amend the.
Start building, yeah.
Basically, the public hearing, what is it set for, Tuesday, March 5th?
Yeah.
Just ask your question. Does contractor just buy new land? Is that a state thing, or state guy, or what's the deal? Private contractor, or what?
Private.
Private contractor.
Means that state-funded money, like the other two, or we don't get no tax money? 8% tax like they pay up there? Is this guy doing the same thing, or what?
This is also, this is not any, any tax credits or grants, or this is all market rate, like I indicated.
So I'm asking, the other part, they only pay 8% taxes for whatever, 100 years, 30 years, or whatever, now they're doing?
All right, is there a motion to approve Resolution 2555 to set this for a public hearing on March 5th, 2024?
Motion.
Second. Motion by Lindberg, second by Peterson.
Roll call Lindberg?
Aye.
Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Resolution 2556, accepting the engineer's statement for completion and final payout for the 2023 street improvement project. Is that like the final number, 1 million?
Spoken to, yeah.
Yeah, I talked about this last time.
This is the final authorizing statement in front of the city and this governing board. Again, the project overall went real well. Ended up with a nice completed project, a lot of new crosswalks and curb cuts, as well as close to 35 new, 35 blocks of pavement. The final contract amount of construction group Omni was 1,321,439.60. And once again, this does achieve a level that allows us to capture that $500,000 USB eight grant money, which again allowed for a significant project. And this also allows the release of that retainer, which 5% of the cost will retain until, and then this is also the date then when our warranty would kick in. So for any repairs or maintenance that they'd be responsible for in the agreement. This needs your review and approval. I don't get those signed and completed.
Is there a motion for Resolution 2556?
Motion. Second.
Motion by Kelly, second by Kroger.
Roll call Lindberg?
Aye.
Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next, we have Resolution 2557, set a public hearing for Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024, at 5:00 PM. Is that right, at 5:00 PM, City Hall Chambers for consideration of the fiscal year '24, '25 consolidated general fund tax levy.
The reason it's at 5 o'clock is we're required by state law to hold a special meeting just for this one specific item. So prior to our council meeting at 5:15, we'll have our regular council meeting, but at 5 o'clock, we will have the special council meeting. It will be opened, we'll have a public hearing, there will be no action taken, it'll be closed, and then we'll open our regular meeting. Proceed. Do you want to add anything to that, Jane?
Yes, councilperson Shaven had kind of filled off something you'd said earlier as far as, we had set aside time way back in our budget planning schedule and timeline that Jane puts together each year, that following Tuesday's meeting, we could, we may have a workshop. We're not doing that workshop because, you know, at this point, you know, the actual budget's been pretty much set in a requested rate. Yet because of the House File 718 changes a year ago, which we've had two or three or four work sessions, this public hearing really concludes all of the work that's gone into preparing a budget, which we've all been a part of across the state. And then a lot of other municipalities are finding that because of multiple changes, you know, 13 divisions in the House File 718, that it's important for the local taxpayers and for all of us to provide further education. And I'll build on that with giving a few examples here that, again, you've seen. And we'll talk about this also at the public hearing. And there's, like with a lot of legislation, some of it's good, some of it's in the middle, and some of it misses its intended consequences, or has unintended consequences. So the included in your packet, which will be published in the paper, and I'll pull this up here. It's real tiny for those of you, but again, this was in your packet. And what I would point out, that the most important item on here is the bottom two numbers in the bottom right. And that's what will go out in these, in the new required taxpayer statements that will be mailed out from the county after March 20th. It's a required step in House File 718. And those bottom two numbers, as we spoke to, what it shows is a drop, a drop of 16.22% in the tax rate. And at first blush, it might, someone might think, well, wow, that's fantastic, a 16.22% drop in the tax rate. Devil's always in the details. Again, this is prescribed by the state. You can't adjust this form, you can't adjust the numbers, and that is inaccurate. It's wrong. I mean, the number's right, but it's a wrong portrayal to our taxpayers. Sat through a budget work session at 1 o'clock today, and in another city, so this is a pretty consistent message from most cities, is that this required numbers is going to show a drop in the tax rate based upon a static $100,000 residential property and a static $100,000 commercial property, assuming in this representation, stating that the valuation didn't change. Well, for those, we all got tax, excuse me, assessed valuation statements from the assessor, and most everyone's valuations went up on the assessment. So why is it saying here, like, because it's a incorrect portrayal on a static $100,000 property? In actuality, which through our budget process, at least locally here and quite a few other municipalities, similar to others, we're actually seeing an increase in tax asking. So this is more or less, when you get this statement, what's going to be published in the paper? It's unfortunate because the, a lot of the messaging behind some of the House File 718 a year ago at the state legislative level was truth and taxation. And unfortunately, when you see a negative 16.22%, and again, the example we saw from Johnston earlier today was in Johnston Island, a drop of 10.22, and that's not accurate for them either. I mean, it's accurate based upon this static $100,000, but it's not accurate to each parcel owner. So then to carry that forward to one other item that has been in front of you before and to tie in with the statement, such as, you know, what, all of the budget work, and again, this is a lot of, this is a trending worksheet that we've been keeping year over year. You've all seen this. And but the bottom, the far right column essentially represents this is this green number here, which is the actual tax asking is going up about, from the previous year, is about 6%. So once again, the blue is the levy, the purple is the assessed, the red is the taxable, and the green is actual real tax dollars. You'll have a printout of this. So to see a negative 16.22% on the tax statement, where in actuality, we're requesting more in tax dollars, which is similar to many other municipalities due to increased costs and services, insurance, materials. And then the last statement, let's go back to, and Jane, please pipe in here, because we. So this will also, and again, this was in your packets. So you provide 131 characters on the bottom of this, is it 131, Jane?
Yeah, it's close to that, yeah.
So what will be published and what you're allowed to put here is some narrative to explain any changes. Again, our change, this narrative, and this will be in the paper, significant changes due to action taken by Iowa Legislature and loss of revenue due to $150,000 of commercial property, which is at a residential rate. That's from Business Property Tax Credit from two years ago. And rollback to residential, a reduction in backfill payments from House File 718, increased insurance, and we've, you know, we continue to be focused on funding our capital accounts. Next year, next year, I think we're going to be faced with a much different story. It's not a valuation year, as well as with this ratchet back and the consolidated general fund levy, we'll likely not be able to fund our capital. We'll probably have to scale those back. Again, we've had a great approach to saving for future work, just like you save in your home savings account. That's going to be somewhat hamstrung next year due to this. Wanted to further explain that. Again, I know many other municipalities and lookout, locally are saying, okay, let's take it upon ourselves to educate on a local basis in terms of truth and taxation. And we couple this with what's going on at the county and the school, because there'll be one statement that goes out. We're just one part of that statement, it's just being mailed after March 20th. And it's unfortunately going to be misleading, when the intent was to try to make it more transparent. Some of you who've been through this and studying it, it's unfortunately become maybe even a bit more confusing. We'll take it upon ourselves to provide more education and information locally. And as always, anytime a taxpayer has questions, at least on what's being done on our local budget, how it impacts the City of Harlem taxes, we're more than happy to have them stop in City Hall, give us a call, to try to be as transparent as we can be, which we know from our governing body, that's what we desire as well, what we've been told, so. Enough of my additional education at this meeting. A lot of moving pieces. It's unfortunate that this notice as well as the tax statement is, the term that Teresa used from Johnston today is that, you know, it's giving the wrong message. My term was, it's misleading. That's all I have at this point on setting the public hearing. Welcome any questions or additional conversation at this point.
You're going to go back to your big, it'd be hard for people. Maybe you could point out the tax levy percent, you know, or tax valuation. Purple line on the clear right skyrocketed, right?
Right.
But that doesn't equate to tax dollars coming back to us on a red line.
Yeah. Bear with me here, and maybe this will be, so this is the far right. So from the previous year, again, the blue, the blue rows are the levy. So we're actually, our levy is dropping 19 cents. So we're seeing a great drop in the levy rate. So almost a 1.15% drop in the levy. The purple is assessed valuations. So again, this ties back to when property owners, be it commercial or residential, you got your assessment notice, and some of those assessment notices, you're seeing increases of 35, 40%, some were 10 and 15%. But across all property tax, all tax classes, the purple showed, at least, again, this is City of Harlem, a 22.18% increase in assessed valuations. You roll all that back to the red lines. Is this helping, Troy?
No, I think it's good for the public to.
I think so, yeah. So that purple, that purple number is here, represented in the purple line here. You've seen it, so from last year to here, it's showing a significant 22% jump in assessed valuations. That's not what you're taxed on. You're taxed on taxable valuation, so once you put it into the top of the funnel and all the credits and homestead credits and military and over 65 and Business Property Tax Credits and.
Rollback, isn't it?
Then you factor in the rollback, so do all the whiz-bang-gudini stuff. Again, taxes are real easy, right? That's what then results in the red, which is the taxable valuation. So, and that shows taxable valuations in previous year only went up 7.8%. So, and then the green shows in terms of, in terms of property tax dollar being requested to support government services, from libraries to streets, to airports, to swimming pools. I also did a quick review for an analysis of five- and 10-year trends in each of these categories, and on an inflationary basis. So if you look at the Bureau of Labor Statistics and National Inflation Rate, for the past five years, inflation has averaged 3.9% per year. And in terms of locally, what the City of Harlem has done in terms of, actually, the green in terms of tax dollars changes year to year has been 1.7%. Less than half of what inflation rate's been. Again, similar to all other entities, the services and goods that we provide or need to purchase and make available, and also cost to labor is changing in a public sector, just like the private sector. Yet compared to inflation, we've not had, our actual tax asking has been less than half of what inflation's been. I've spoken maybe a little bit more of that, Troy, than you were looking at.
No, I think it's interesting to share that information.
Motion to approve Resolution 2557, setting the public hearing for April 2nd at 5:00 PM in the chambers.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Kroger, second by Peterson.
Roll call Lindberg?
Aye.
Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next, we need to receive and file a partner committee meeting minutes from February 15th, 2024. of 2024. Have a chance to look at those minutes.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Rudolph, second by Kroger.
Rokal Lindberg.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Thank you.
And out of that meeting came the next, well, there's lots of things, I guess, came out of there, but I guess this next one is, the first one is recommendation to increase lifeguard starting pay to $10 an hour and keep the current incentive program, which we've had in place. Also increase pool pass prices, family pass is going $195, single to 120, and daily admission to $7. And then the pool pass sale will be the entire month of April. Anyone want to comment about that, or talk about that out of that meeting?
What's the current, what's the current starting wage down there now?
Starting wage?
Wage.
So if you'd like, maybe provide a little more context, a few of you were able to attend that, or listen into that meeting, again, all of the five-person Parker Rec Board is with a lot of staff, review, took a deep dive into this, and some of this ties back to, again, just what's happening in terms of making budgets work for a community. Looking at both, so these first recommendations are on the, actually include both the revenue and expense side too, so lifeguard wages being expense, obviously, that's one of the largest expenses at the pool is payroll. And in order to continue to recruit and retain and have staff come back, we, looking across other South West Side communities, and also, we've known this was creeping up for the past few years, we tend to lag that. But to answer your question, it's been 850 with the incentive pay, and if you saw in your packet, I don't think I had all the work papers, but that was provided to you, that we by far are the lowest in our region. Elkhorn, for example, is going $11 an hour, most others are in the $10 to $12 an hour range. Admissions on the second item, the mayor referenced there, this recommendation, the admission prices, in looking back, have not changed since 2010, all the past prices. So to tie anything with others of your life, I mean, the recreation of goods that you've not seen a price change in the last 14 years, so, in looking at that, and then the daily admission, a lot of this was comparing to other competitors, as well as to make up the, so the net of the increased payroll cost with these adjustments and admission costs is, for the most part, a net zero to the operation of the pool. And as we know, other quality of life initiatives, such as the library, an airport, a pool, other, those are not revenue money-making, you do your best to offset the losses, so, for the cost to run those services. But with these changes on both the admissions and the payroll, it's essentially a net zero.
I appreciate the research.
Yeah.
And appreciate the Parker Board for, they've had some good debates, and, for example, the initial recommendation was to consider a daily mission jump from five to six, and after they discussed it, and viewed it, the motion was made to actually increase it to seven, and to recommend that to you, which we also support, and that's in line with, there's some of the rate of nine for daily pass.
And the amount of the sale for the month of April is at 10%? What's the sale price?
Yeah, so the month of April for the, this will be the third or fourth year, and it's been $20 less for those sale prices.
Thanks.
And some interesting, if you look at your packets, some gee whiz, it was interesting as we went back and studied that, that on the family passes for the sale timeframe, about half the family passes were sold during the sale timeframe, and the other half were sold every year. And on the single passes, it was, I think, close to 80% were outside, and only 10 or 20% were bought during the sale time, and the other 70 or 80% were bought. And we'll see how that may change with, you know, we'll be able to look back to say, okay, with increasing the price, did more people try to purchase at the sale price? We can go back and look at that once this takes place.
And pool passes, they can purchase on, through the website, correct?
Right. Starting April 1st.
Starting April 1st, okay.
And we'll be making multiple announcements about that across our Facebook, website, and postings, share them with the other departments also.
Mayor, I'll make that motion through, be number one.
Motion by Lindberg, second by Shaven.
Rokal Lindberg.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next item coming out of that meeting was recommendation to add a caregiver pass for $60 each, that is defined as either grandparent or babysitter, 16 years or older, a maximum of three passes per season pass, and these have to be added to a family or a single season pass. This would be a new addition, correct? They'll have a caregiver.
Items two and three are based upon user and citizen and feedback, and also seeing some best practices from some other communities. Motion.
Second. Motion by Peterson, second by Shaven.
Rokal Lindberg.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Thank you.
And lastly, out of that meeting, a recommendation to increase swim lessons to $75 per lesson and hold the lessons one hour per day for one week.
If I could add to that, just to real quick context, for many years, it's been over two weeks for a half hour, and consistent feedback to the pool and the guards and the manager, and is, if it all could be done in one week at one hour session, parents and others would love, would highly appreciate that. And so it would change from two weeks to one week, from a half hour to one hour, and then the previous cost was $65, this would increase $10, and on the same, within the same vein as far as the increased cost of payroll. And that has shifted the cost to about the same $20.
I'll motion to approve that, second.
Motion by Kelly, second by Rudolph.
Rokal Lindberg.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
City Administrator Report.
I feel like I've done plenty of chatting and updating so far, yet wouldn't we like to provide some other updates to you? As some of you receive and may monitor, you know, what's happening at the Capitol. Last week was Funnel Week, and I know across our leave of cities, and we're being very mindful and aware of any proposed additional property tax changes. At this point, it doesn't appear as though anything significant's being introduced, or had been introduced on the property tax level. One thing that you may have seen, and I did see, is some bill introduced in terms of the commercial daycares that might be considered for relief on property taxes. So, because I think a lot of the focus has been on some of the other governor's mandates with AEA and education topics, so. The AHPC, so that's the Upper Story Facade Committee, has, you've been on that, Mr. Lindberg, so, eight applicants, all been interviewed over last Thursday and Monday. The committee will be convening in this week. Great to see continued interest in our downtown, and people want to put money in their buildings with some, obviously, grant support, yet had some great applications and some nuances that the committee wants to further review before making recommendations of awards. So, appreciate Kyle and that committee's involvement there. The airport bid opening for the hangar doors, for hangar number three, had that bid opening last Friday. The Airport Commission will review those at this Friday's Airport Commission meeting. I wanted to mention that because it hits and drives at the heart of what, in terms of inflation and costs, and how cities and public properties not immune to that, just like anyone else. So, we had a hangar door project on Hangar Six in 19 and 20, and 2021, so, we did three hangar doors with the hydraulic, and in 2020, the low bid on that was just around $100,000. We had two bidders that we opened bids for Friday, and the low bid for three doors was And for the most, for all intents and purposes, the spec, the spec and scope of work was pretty much, almost identical, so, but expect that will eventually come your way, but just wanted to report on that. The HomeServe or the Service Line Warranty Program mailings, many residents have been receiving those, that's on the optional voluntary coverage that you all approved to make available to our citizens. And we've had a few calls in City Hall, they haven't had as many calls this week, but we know those have been hitting mailboxes from the warranty company, and just encourage citizens once again that if you have questions, you know, there's a toll-free number, as well as a website, that you can go to, and that is all handled outside, it's not a city function, it's not a city program, but we encourage our residents to at least consider it, talk to their insurance agent, and I think it's a good educational opportunity. And the last item I have is to share some great news, officially that we did receive and were awarded a grant for construction of the Highway 44 River Access that would complement what's been done on additional bend to provide a safer and more updated access for river enthusiasts, kayakers, canoeers. Project started four years ago, almost five years ago, and it was a competitive grant. We applied last year and submitted an application this year. There were six applications from the DNR Water Trails Development Group, four were awarded, we were one of those four, and of the half a million, we were the largest grantee of a $218,500.
Nice.
And here's a rendering, which again, this rendering, whoa, hopefully I didn't-
Kick it right off.
There we go. That's a rendering that has been in place now for three, four years, and there's been user studies, and paddlers groups, and farmers, and law enforcement, and we also received for the preliminary design and preliminary development, we received a grant four years ago to assist with the preliminary phase, this would be for the construction and completion phase. Realistically, there'll be two, we have two funds for this, there'll be the Water Trails Development, and I'll speak more to this at the next meeting, because we have some items in front of you to approve. The two main funding sources are this Water Trails Development Grant, and then also that $273,000 that is remaining from a Pioneer Park Trail that was then going to be used for entrance lights and entrance signs, and so we have a four-way light to use those two to do this River Access. So the next meeting, we'll have a recommendation for the actual grant agreement, as well as to work with LT Leon, which is the engineering group that we engaged with the preliminary, and it's the same group that helped Nishna Bend and the conservation, and I think some of you have met him, because he's been with our park board before. So some good news there, and we'll have that, and so, again, another quality of life initiative that I know the, which has been said to be, and it's on your mind too, it's like, well, how can we use that thing, because the river's not, doesn't have any water in it? Well, at some point, well, in laws of averages, at some point, river enthusiasts and many other rivers will start to develop to, but it's been a desired quality of life initiative, and nice to receive the final award, so.
Awesome.
And that's all I have for my update report tonight. If you have questions or comments for me, I'd be happy to address those.
Mary Jean.
I would like to share something.
Okay.
So I just wanted to let you know that our administrative assistant position has been filled. Susan Brahman will be starting the 29th of February.
February.
So we're excited to have her with us.
All full, right? Or all backfilled, right?
Yeah.
Backfilled, all backfilled, right? Did I say that right?
All the positions are filled now.
Oh, yeah, yeah, everything's filled. You were talking backfill, I'm forgetting.
The first domino dropped, the entire building, the dominos are not falling.
All the dominos have fallen.
Good deal.
Yeah.
And received a number of, we received a number of quality applicants and applicant flows, so, so, nice to see that.
Appreciate that.
Good.
Next, the accounts being more fledged with the backflow tax.
Backflow?
That'll be your final?
No, the second one in March. I won't be here for the next one.
Oh.
Ashley.
Right, flying out somewhere.
We've got a month of prep.
Thanks, Gene, for your report.
Your vacation's a while.
You too, Gene. I don't have anything under my reports tonight.
That's great, yes.
We'll move on to Shelby County Chamber of Commerce Industry, Todd Vleen.
Good evening.
Todd.
I am, starting this week, we've been accepting the Citizen of the Year nomination for our upcoming banquet. Again, the banquet will be held on March 15th, a Friday evening, so what we ask people to do is they can either email us at info@explorershebbycounty.com, or write us a letter, mail it to us at, to our office, or drop it off with a person that they would like to nominate, and give us some back information as to what this person has done to deserve the nomination as far as they're concerned. What we're looking for is people who are, of course, you have to be a resident of Shelby County, and you just have to show excellence in community support, whether it's through volunteerism or other actions that you take to help those throughout our community and to make our quality of life here even better. So again, those are due Friday, is when we're asking to have them in, that gives us a chance to review them, and still gives us time to, you know, get the award ordered and all that. At the same time this week, the businesses will be voting on the New Chamber Member of the Year, the Chamber Business of the Year, and Chamber Non-Property of the Year. So that ballot has been sent out to the Chamber Businesses, we surveyed monkey for that, and we asked the membership just to keep it to one vote, you know, per business member, as far as filling out the ballot, and then we'll be awarding those also. We'll be announcing the top three in each category, and then we'll, of course, have the award during the banquet, so. Reminder to the public that Mertu Medical Center is doing a blood analysis screening right now, runs through Friday, it's a great way to get that testing done, they do it from 6:45 in the morning till 10:45, but you do need an appointment, so just remind folks they got to call 755-4288 to set an appointment for that. Then also, another thing to note is on March 7th, which is a Thursday, it's going to be the inclusion night event at the high school, so that'll be basketball skills, cheerleading, and high school and middle school basketball games for all Special Olympic families and Unified Partner families. It'll start at 5:30 with check-in, then they'll have their skills competition, they'll do their cheerleading, we'll have two games, and it's a great night, of course, the public is invited to come and participate. Talking about libraries, because it came up during the legislative coffee, you know, there's some stuff going on out there, but about how great our libraries are, Thursday next week, we have a presentation at Arway Berry that should be really interesting, is Vivian Opfer, Darcy Dowery, she's written a book called Iowa's Lost History of the Titanic. So if you're a fan of the Titanic, you're a fan of the history of it, this is from an Iowa perspective, and it should be wonderful, and she'll be there, of course, to not only speak about the book, but she'll have the book available for sale and for signature if you want to go buy. And then finally, kind of an exciting anniversary coming up on March 23rd, that's a Saturday, is actually going to be Roseland-Lundell Shelby County Golf Course's 45th Anniversary this year. So they're going to kick it off with a dinner at St. Boniface Parish Hall, the dinner, the cocktails will be at 4:30, the dinner will be served at 6, it's only $20 for the dinner tickets, and then they'll also be having a live auction afterwards, and all the money raised will be used just to support maintenance and upgrading of the golf course, but 45th Anniversary's pretty exciting. It's only $20 for the dinner tickets and then they'll also be having a live auction afterwards and all the money raised will be used just to support maintenance and upgrading of the golf course. But 45th anniversary is pretty exciting. So if you get a chance to go out and attend, I'll please do. And that's it for tonight.
Thanks, Todd.
Thanks, Todd.
And Joe sent a message that he was unable to attend, so don't have anything from HMU tonight. Shelby County Sheriff's update. Anything to report?
Not a thing.
All smooth, everything's taken care of?
Yep.
I haven't heard any sirens in the last 24 hours.
Not a thing, most.
Yes.
Go higher.
Yeah, and I guess that is true. On the third or fourth of next month, we have Michael Brooks, who's going to be starting with us. He's coming over from the Auden County Sheriff's Office. He's been with them for about seven years now and then he'll come over here.
That's your last spot then, right?
So we were full staffed in November, so we have Brandon Gosh stepped away and then we just got Debbie Brooks coming. Do you guys have any questions for us at all?
Keep up the good work.
And I would just point out, as we do receive each month, and all this team there, and in your packet, you receive this each month and with the new year until we, I guess it'll be in April or May, when we'll actually be able to compare it to the stats from last year with new reporting in the sheriff's office. But administratively and with the office as well as leadership there, it's been a great team to work with and it's been a nice, continues to be a nice transition. But I just wanted to comment on the monthly report, that's why we don't have any comparisons to last year, as I think you can well understand that.
All right, thanks for coming.
Thank you, sir.
Comments from the public.
Got a question.
Okay.
Here's maybe the gene on what's going on on the bridge on Fourth Street. Any update on that or?
The Fourth Street structure is continuing to be evaluated. It is closed indefinitely at this point. We are, as we saw, studied and some proposals from a group, an engineering group that were ranging from 500,000 to 700,000. Don't quote me exactly on those numbers, but just trying to give you some context. So looking at some other maintenance or replacement alternatives and still, we talked with Fairwood as well, I mean, possibilities are, so no, no exact line of sight yet.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Welcome Streets going to the ground pretty soon.
What's that again?
Welcome Signs.
Welcome Signs. Oh, welcome signs. Yeah, I know, previously reported, so Prairie Rose Canopy and Sign is who again, got the award, it was awarded last fall and intended presently, end of April, first part of May is when they intend to, again, the construction cycle should not be all that long. And again, the new location will be at the, by Van Deest in the right way as you make the curve coming into town pretty south. And then coming in from north will be on the backside of the water tower on the hillside. As you look towards the high school, we'd be two entrance signs that, for the plans that were approved and they're exciting to finally approve. And actually spoke for Prairie Rose Sign, spoke at them last week, so still on target?
Good. Long-term project, probably.
Long-term project.
As long as it dog park, but.
We didn't get to the 45th anniversary of that project.
Yes.
It was close.
Thank goodness.
It's about right.
Perseverance.
Hearing nothing else, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.